Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting, regular meeting Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, 7:00 p.m. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing on its own.
With liberty and justice for all. Okay, correspondence, Mrs. Norrell.
Mike Sterafani, a parent, wants to have us have full in-person for K-8, and he would like to see it for five days a week as soon as possible. Ella Grasso wants to thank Dr. Semmel and the teachers for doing an outstanding job. She also supports our system having a diverse set of teachers, paraprofessionals, and administrators that mirror the diversity of the outside world. She hopes to see this as a requiring personnel priority for the town.
That's all our respondents. That's it? Okay, thank you. All right, public comment. Our first speaker is Mark Mascola.
For the opportunity to address, I'm the Republican alternate on the Board of Finance. The Chief of Staff.
Mark, we can't hear you.
I'm not sure if you can hear us, but your sound is very glitchy and you're not coming through clearly. Mark, can you hear us? I think we may have lost him, Bill. He's in and out.
Bill, we can't hear him, he's going in and out.
Yeah, I think he just dropped out, so we can go to Mike first.
Okay, um, okay, we're gonna go to Mike Miller until they figure out what's wrong with the other computer. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Board of Ed and the Superintendent's Office. My name's Mike Miller, I live at 19 Lindbrook Road, I have two children in the Trumbull School System, and a member of the Town Council representing District 1. I'm speaking to you with concerns about the proposed 2021-2022 school budget. These concerns are not directly about the size of the budget, it's about ensuring money within the budget is properly accounted for and allocated where it should be. The recent audit slash operational review conducted on the Board of Ed show recurring mismanagement of how funds were allocated and adherence to policies and laws were not always followed. While I believe the new superintendent and his staff and the Board of Ed are following protocols that were established and should be followed from that audit, the enormity of administering a $109 million budget can be a daunting task. Perhaps the only thing more daunting is creating that budget. That's where I hope the Board of Ed and the superintendent did everything possible to work with other town officials, from the First Selectman's Office to the Board of Finance and Town Council, ensured the proposed $113 million budget being voted on tonight is an accurate fiscal representation. This isn't about withholding money or depriving our schools of what they need to educate our kids. This is about properly distributing funds within a budget to provide clarity and proper oversight, which will help ensure future budgets are better understood and created. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, how about Dr. Mascola?
Uh, Mr. Mascola is here, go ahead.
Hey, Bill, is this better?
Yes, sir, much better.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Great, great, thanks. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to address the Board of Education. My name is Mark Mascola, I live here in Trumbull. I am the Republican alternate on the Board of Finance and a finance professional with 27 years' experience. But most importantly, I'm a father of three kids currently in the Trumbull School District and one graduate. Like all of you, I'm extremely grateful to live in a town with such an amazing school system full of such dedicated professionals. Thank you for all you do. Putting aside for a moment the significant operational deficiencies identified by the recently released audit report and the possibility to conduct a more comprehensive forensic audit, my comments tonight are focused on the current budget proposal. As put forth, the current proposed budget is $113.7 million, or a 4.35% increase over last year's approved budget. Given that this administration is new, did not prepare the prior year's budget, and as noted above, the operational review indicated several deficiencies, I believe a more reasonable and informative comparison would be to compare the proposed budget to the current year's forecasted spending. In reviewing the information presented to the Board on January 26th, the administration reported spending for the six months ended December, plus committed and estimated spending for the remaining six months, would result in a full year spending of $106.2 million, or 2.8 under the 2021 budget of $109. Using that forecasted spending compared to the currently proposed budget yields an increase of over 7%, not the communicated 4.35%. Note that these are total budget figures, and while transfers between accounts may not have been completed, the transfers will not, should not affect the total spending. I hope we would agree that a 7% increase would be very difficult for the citizens of Trumbull to accept, especially given the pandemic. My request to the Board and the administration is simple. Recognizing it may be difficult to explain the current proposed budget to last year's budget, given the items noted above, please help reconcile and explain your current forecasted spending for 2021 to your proposed budget. Without the reconciliation, it is extremely difficult to conclude if the proposed budget is reasonable. I'd be happy to meet and share my analysis with the Board of Education and the administration if they so desire. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
All right, thank you and good evening. I do have a few items to discuss just quickly, and then I'm also going to ask a few other people to come to the podium to make some comments, although one of the people is Ms. Heffley who's out there in cyberspace. I do want to mention that I was able to join the We the People dress rehearsal that was last week, I think it was Thursday. I believe Jack's on the line today and will be able to talk more about that. But I gotta tell you, I had a chance to listen to one of the units and I was really impressed by the work of the kids. I wish I could have stayed longer, but I actually had a bit of a family emergency. My daughter up at UConn had water leaking into the condos, so I had to get there too. So it was a little bit hard to participate for a long time, but what I did see the kids do, I saw well-prepared kids speaking very well about their topics. And I do hope that Jack will talk more about that as well and how they fared and next steps in the process, so I'm looking forward to that. Next topic is snow days. Today, we had our fourth snow day, and as I mentioned in my email this morning, we were told that this was a challenging forecast. And our forecaster was very surprised that we had so much dry air kind of come across this area where we really didn't get much snow except for this morning. So the morning to me was a little challenging, but the rest of the day was very unimpressive, I would say, in this particular area. I don't think people are complaining too much that they don't have to shovel out though. But now that we've had four snow days, the old-fashioned style snow days that we talked about, we did say that we move to remote teaching days if we have additional snow days. This would mean that our last current day of school would be Friday, June 18th. So the remote days will allow us to not go too deep into June, because we know this, a lot of our buildings get warm, just like many buildings across the state. And this would also allow graduation to occur on Friday, June 18th. But people shouldn't be reserving the 18th at this time as the actual last day of school, because if we do lose power, or we had any other kind of major situations, the 18th is not a guarantee. So I just wanted to kind of point that out to folks about that. So that's it around the snow. I do hope the snow ended, probably one of my least favorite things to do, even during budget season, calling, calling snow days is never any fun, because you know you're impacting so many families, certainly want to err on the side of safety. I'm going to ask Ms. Heffley to give a comment on some parent and student workshops, so I know she's out there on Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good evening. We just wanted to give you a brief update. Since the beginning of the school year, a couple of times a month, we've been running parent workshop series, myself and the Tech Integrators. This last Wednesday, or a couple of Wednesdays ago, we ran a parent workshop in the evening on keeping organized with Google, and we also ran a student workshop, because students had an early release that day on the same topic. I'm happy to say we had 61 students from the middle school and high school attend, and we had 16 teachers who joined other students to kind of learn alongside them. So we were very excited about that. And then on the evening session, we had about 18 parents across the district attend that session. So we're finding those parent workshops are very helpful, and we've run them on a variety of different topics to really kind of engage the community on what we're doing with teaching and learning. Thank you.
Great, thanks. And we actually have Dr. Iwaniki, our new Assistant Superintendent. I wanted to have her give some findings that she's seen in her first couple of weeks here in Trumbull. So, Dr. Iwaniki, and make sure we speak directly into the mic, because we want all of our people at home to hear well.
Good evening. So, thank you for being here tonight, everyone. I just wanted to say that in these first few weeks in Trumbull Public Schools, I have been absolutely outstanding, outstandingly impressed by the work I'm seeing in the schools. For example, in elementary schools, I've seen kindergarteners at the benchmark here mid-year that are doing far beyond benchmarks that I've seen in other schools regionally. I've seen that in your intermediate grades, you have students that are doing next generation standard skills, where they're comparing things like side of squid to their internal organ systems, to human organs. And telling me when I ask them, what are you learning? They're not just saying, science, they're octopuses, they're saying, we're learning about the internal organ systems of the squid, and right now, we just took out the esophagus. Do you want to see? I saw joy, I saw full classrooms, I saw middle school classes that were doing high school geometry. I saw the, at the high school level, that you have teachers that are incredibly engaged, really trying to get people interested in high-level thinking and high-level work, doing Zoom and Google-type of meets. But what was really impressive was your agri-science program doing work that is, again, on the college and university level, and the educators that are putting in extra hours to make this happen in multiple environments. I just can't say enough about how proud I am to be a part of the educational system, where you have such dedicated families that are making sure that the kids can interact, and teachers that are really going above and beyond in multiple modalities to make that happen. I'm just really pleased to see, and the students, at almost every classroom, I saw music being done with programs both in the classroom and at home in elementary school, comparing Baroque music to their own students' original compositions. I mean, I was again and again impressed by the way that the teachers are fulfilling standards and in environments where kids were happy, and they were experiencing joy through their learning. So I wanted to share that as my first week's impressions. Thank you.
Thank you. And that ends the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, thank you. Next is the Board Chair Report, I just have a few comments. This evening, we will see a teacher presentation. We all are looking forward to observe active teaching experiences our staff provides to our students. Tonight, the budget will be presented for approval. First, I want to thank the board members for submitting questions and making phone calls to the Superintendent and the Business Director to clarify their questions. It's important to note that our responsibility is to our students, programs, and staff. We are confident in the responses we received from Dr. Semmel and Mr. Hendrickson, as they assembled a fair and relevant plan dispersment for the district. We look to move forward and provide the best experiences for our students. And lastly, Mr. Hendrickson is going to present an update on the operational review this evening. He will include recommendations cited from the report, and he will list those implemented at each meeting in the future. Thank you. Our next is our Student Board of Representatives' Report. Gabby and Jack?
Hi, everyone. My name is Gabby. I hope everyone is doing well, and I'd love to tell you about a few schools in our town today, starting with Trumbull High School. Trumbull High School completed 31 Days of Gratitude, concluding our gratitude challenge. I'm proud to be a part of a school community that is committed to spreading kindness and positivity, especially in these circumstances. I would like to thank Mr. Manuel for starting this initiative and for his commitment to getting the entire school, the staff, and the students involved. Trumbull High School's We the People team was the state runner-up at the Connecticut State Finals yesterday, and we will be competing at Nationals in the spring. As a member of the team, I want to say an extra thank you to our amazing teacher, Ms. Bolan, for all that she has done to prepare us for this competition. Madison Middle School's 6th grader Hudson Zence, entry into Senator Chris Murphy's annual Martin Luther King Essay Contest, has been chosen as the 4th Congressional District Middle School category winner. Congrats, Hudson. In addition, tomorrow, Wednesday, February 10th, all Madison Panthers will be participating in the Panthers Love to Play Day, a day in which the staff comes together to plan for a one-hour event in which students will engage in creative, thought-provoking, entertaining, and collaborative activities. On Thursday, February 11th, Tasha Elementary School will be celebrating Valentine's Day. The room coordinators and teachers have been working together to plan fun and exciting festive activities for the students. Also, in celebration of Black History Month, Tasha is also preparing for a virtual visit from author Charles R. Smith Jr. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack?
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to be here with all of you today. I wanted to begin by looking towards Hillcrest Middle School, where they have just recently begun their middle school basketball season. A letter from Mr. King announced their new coaches, Coach Seltenreich and Coach Trommelen. They will be hosting tryouts soon and are taking measures accordingly to assure the safety of students and faculty. I wanted to say that I am glad that we are able to give middle school students the chance and opportunity to participate in athletics despite everything going on, and I'm sure that the basketball players at Hillcrest are excited to get started. At Trumbull High School, I wanted to extend my congratulations to Dylan Cranston, a current senior who was one of 23 students selected from Connecticut to participate in this year's All-National Honor Ensemble. A total of 500-plus students from all over the United States are selected to participate in the event. The conference took place virtually over the weekend of January 8th to 10th. This is an honor for Connecticut, as well as the Trumbull Music Program, as this is the most competitive audition group and is seen as the best of the best. Dylan Cranston participated last year with Robert Goldstein, and they were the first two students ever in Trumbull to be selected in the group. Dylan had to go through the rigorous process of auditioning again, scoring perfect scores on both his Western Region and All-State auditions. Additionally, Dylan was also recently selected for the All-Easteren Choir Ensemble. If things improve, he would love to come sing for you guys again, should COVID-19 conditions improve. Congratulations to Dylan and his family for accomplishing such a great feat in such uncertain conditions. With that, I would like to conclude my statement to the Board. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
And Gabby, thank you both.
Thank you both. Okay, next, we're going to reports and action items. We need approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 26th. I'm gonna need a motion.
Lucinda, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of January 26th, 2021.
I need a second.
I can send it back.
Tim Gallo, second. Did everyone look at it? Are there any adjustments that need to be made, or is it okay? All okay? Okay, let's take the vote. Tim?
I'm in favor.
Marie?
In favor.
Mike? Mike Ward? Mike Ward?
Muted.
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Jackie?
I'm in favor.
Yes, in favor.
Allison? In favor. And Lucinda, in favor. That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, next is Personnel, Dr. Semmel.
All right, under Personnel, we just have one item, it's a resignation. Michelle Sansone, a math interventionist of 2.5 at Frenchtown Elementary School, who's currently on a personal leave of absence, and has been working with us since August 2005, and she's resigning effective January 29th, 21.
I would make the motion to accept the resignation of Michelle Sansone, who was a math interventionist at Frenchtown Elementary School, and she will be resigning effective 1/29/20.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Jackie. Okay. Anyone have anything? Does anyone know Michelle Sansone?
Yes, I'd like to talk about Michelle. Michelle started with me in 5th grade, was an outstanding 5th grade teacher, always showed with her students that she could push them to think beyond and to think critically. When we opened up the idea of math specialists, she applied, and of course, I supported her in getting the position. She was half-time, all the time, at Frenchtown, but did a wonderful job.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to take the vote to accept the resignation. Tim?
I'm in favor.
Marie? Mike Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Gabby?
Yes, in favor.
Yes, in favor.
Allison? In favor. And Lucinda, in favor. That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, our next order of business, we are all excited to see this on the agenda, so we're looking forward to seeing what you're going to present. This is the teacher presentation using Seesaw in the primary grades to support blended learning. Amy, Handen, and Rachel Orr.
Hi, I'm Rachel Orr. Good evening to everybody. I'm going to share my screen with you and show you some activities that myself and my preschool colleagues have been using at TechEC. I am an inclusive four-year-old classroom teacher. 50% of the population of my students have identified special needs, and 50% are typical peers. Can everybody see my screen and hear me? I just want to pass that before I continue. Okay, awesome. So Seesaw has been a really wonderful tool for all of us. It gives us the flexibility to create our own activities related to the curriculum, as well as share within a large community of already existing activities, which is really wonderful. It's not only a platform for activities and lessons, but it's also a platform for messaging and communication with parents. So every morning, I'm able to message my total remote learners, as well as on Wednesdays, my whole class, and they're able to respond back as well. And you can also see what messages have been read and which have been unread. The very first thing I want to show is actually a video of my own son. My son is a four-year-old at TechEC in a different classroom, and this is just a video of an example of him doing an activity on Seesaw independently. Some of our activities need more adult supervision and support, and some of them are created as this one, where a lot of children can do it on their own. So in this activity, it's a letter sort. You see that, you know, after months of practice, he's able to find the highlighter pen, he's searching for the letter N and circling it. My daughter in the background. And in the right-hand corner of Seesaw, there is actually a little green check, I'll show you that on another tab. Let me hop over to this one in the corner, there's that green check. If children are on Chromebooks or iPads, they're able to tap that to complete their own work. So that was just one example of a child-driven activity they could complete on their own. I wanted to show this activity, because this is one I actually used within my classroom on the smartboard. It was during our Arctic Animals Week, and the children were able to come up, expressively identify the number, and then using this move tool on the bottom with the little hands, they were able to count out Arctic animals to match the numeral that's printed. You know, because we do have to juggle children within us in the classroom and children who are remote, I use Chromebook close to the smartboard, so my children at home can actually count as well. But what's awesome about Seesaw is that I could also send this activity to that child who's at home for more of a rich opportunity, you know, because they're not in class for our centers, our math centers, our playbase centers. This gives them some more opportunities to explore the curricular items we're working on. I'm gonna hop over to this one. This is one of my favorite activities we did this year during Martin Luther King Junior Week. On that Wednesday, we, on Seesaw, we sent to all my students a link, you can embed links in Seesaw activities to the book, the piecebook by Todd Parr, and the children's activity was to explain to us what peace means to them. And one of the really wonderful things about Seesaw is that they allow the children to respond in a number of ways. They can write their answers, they can draw their answers, they can record their voice, or they can video. So this is one example of a child both drawing a picture, they took a picture of their drawing, and then they also recorded what peace means to them.
I give peace to where I give a hug.
So they were able to might use the microphone tool, when you click out a response, there's a microphone tool, as well as take a picture of the drawing they did. I have just two more activities, and then I will pass it on to Amy, she's gonna talk a little bit about the older grades. This is an example of how the activities can be scaffold for different levels of our children, different abilities. The children had to use this little black rectangle as a magnifying glass and search through the snow and the trees to find letters, and then they had to drag the letters over to the right side. So that's what some children were asked to do, was to receptively identify letters. And then the next piece was having them expressively identify and say the letters that they found.
J, Y, T, D, P, A, I, O, it's L.
It could be either.
N, C, O.
So that sort of shows the flexibility within Seesaw, that you can really send specific activities to your children, knowing what skills they have, and you can send more advanced activities to children who are working above the curriculum. And one other really quick activity I wanted to show was one that I created, because Seesaw has a community of activities already there, but also we can create activities. This is for one of my children who is a total remote learner but has an IEP. So I am able to send activities specific to their goals and objectives. This in particular is sorting circles and not circles. What's really wonderful, too, with this move tool on the bottom, they can drag the shapes, but then they can also use these tools on the left, the mic and the camera, to record themselves doing the activity, so I can see their line of thinking as they're completing it. I mentioned earlier about the communication between families, but I can also send back work to students with the comment, both positive, like affirmations, like wonderful job, you did great, but also, you know, check Slide 5 or check Number 10 and send it back. So Seesaw has been, you know, a really wonderful resource for us at the elementary level, especially at TechEC, and we've all really enjoyed using it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. That was very interesting. Good to see.
All right, hi, can you hear me? I'm Amy.
Hi.
I'm gonna share my, also here. I also have a student at my school in 1st grade, and I get to see her use Seesaw. I'm a 2nd grade teacher, and I'm gonna echo several of the things that Rachel said, we use Seesaw in many similar ways, especially that differentiation tool, because we're always trying to meet our kids where they are. Seesaw makes it really easy in one click to assign things to specific students. I have a student who is in math intervention, and I can give her, especially on those remote Wednesdays, activities that target her goals with the math specialist. So we love that, being able to target different groups. And I love the way the kids can express themselves in so many different ways. So this is a view of my Seesaw, and this is kind of what the kids see, they have this feed of activities when they go on, whatever's been assigned to them. This was an activity that we did, that was a scavenger, they needed to find living things and non-living things, and this student chose to take a single picture with a label, dog is living, pillow not living, and she met the objective, she knows the dog is living, the pillow is not living. But then a different student went and just took pictures of about everything he could find that fit on the page of living and non-living. And again, both met the objective, but in totally different ways. And I had a third student who actually videoed and said, this is living because, this is non-living because, which was not part of the expectation. So I also appreciate that Seesaw lets those students who want So I also appreciate that Seesaw lets those students who want to go above and beyond what's asked, they have the platform to do that. You can actually add pages to what the teacher gives you. So there's a template that the students respond on, but they can add more pages to it if they want to show that understanding above and beyond what you've asked them, what you've asked them to do. One of the reasons that we really, I think, started using Seesaw at the beginning is because we have these remote learners. When we started hybrid, and then I have five temporary remote learners, there are some activities that just don't translate well on the Google Meet. So we wanted to find ways to make sure our kids at home were accessing the same materials that the kids at school were. So for example, reading a book to the class, and we do a ton of read-alouds at the elementary level, it can be hard on when you're on that meet. So being able to post the read-aloud to Seesaw, where students can listen to it at their own pace, they can stop, rewind, it can be distracting sometimes, learning at home. So they can kind of get that information at their own pace, rewind if they miss something, listen to it again. But the activity that they all did, again, was something that they could respond to in a variety of ways. So they could text, I mean, use the text tool, not text. They could use text and type their answers for this activity, which is going through the stages of the tree. But they could also record and talk about it with just the microphone, without the video, which I also appreciate, because I have, you know, students who love to be in front of the camera and other students who would just rather you hear their voice and not have to have their face on there. So they can just record their voice, or they can be in that video talking all about it. And one thing about second graders is their understanding, what they can share with you verbally is so much more than what they can write a lot of times. So this gives them the opportunity to just demonstrate their understanding without being limited to having to write everything, because they can talk, 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 talk. You're off. Two more features I just want to show you super quick. One Rachel actually already mentioned is the ability to respond to the students' work, especially my remote learners. The, when they do the activities on Seesaw at home, once they hit that green check, it comes straight to me, which is great, because if they're doing everything on pencil and paper, and I don't get it till the next Wednesday when they drop off, there's just that wait time, and there might, there might be something I needed to catch and help them with. So this sends it to me immediately, and I can send them feedback immediately. In this case, the student needed to go back and finish following the directions and record herself. And then she did that, and then she sent it back to me. So that's a great feature, and it doesn't have to be written either, like typed. I could also leave a voice recording instead. I have a couple of students that that's a better way for me to share feedback with them, is if they hear my voice. And then the last thing, this is my activity library. So this has like 200 activities that I've either done with my class or I've saved for future, for the future. And as you can imagine, making all of these from scratch is extremely time-consuming. And especially this year where, you know, it's just so much more work, juggling both groups of kids. A lifesaver has been the community. So Seesaw has users all over the world. And the Seesaw users that have been, I've had the most training and been with them the longest, are called ambassadors. And you can access their activities that they've created. So I can go to the Seesaw community, and I can look for the skills and the concepts that I'm going to work on with my kids, and I can save it to my library so that I can do that in my own classroom. And they even give us a district activity library, where teachers from Trumbull, we can share with each other the things that we've created. So I can go on here and see that the wonderful Ms. Mareska over at Frenchtown has posted some reading passages for Black History Month. So I can click on these and save them, and I can use them with my classroom. So we really enjoyed using Seesaw, and especially the consistency of it through all the different models, knowing that we have a consistent platform to keep delivering instruction, no matter where the kids are or what model we're in, has been really great. So that's it. Thank you for letting me share with you.
Rachel, I have a question. Can you tell me, how do you assess them? What assessments do you use for them?
Using Seesaw specifically?
Yeah.
So like I said, if it's something that we're specifically using for data collection, and it's say like counting one-to-one correspondence, which is one of our math curricular items, I'll have them record themselves counting. So like if you take that Arctic Animals example, I'll have them record counting out each slide. And then when they submit their work, I can see how they completed the activity.
Okay. Okay, and Amy, when you give them something to read, how do you assess the reading?
Well, a lot of the phonics activities we do, where they're working on, right now they're working on multi-syllabic words. So I'll have them, after they do the activity, hit that record button and actually record themselves reading the words. There are fluency passages we do that go along with phonics program, that are stories that have, you know, scooped markings in them to help kids phrase appropriately. And we'll have them, again, click that microphone and record it for us. And it's nice, because then you have a record of it, too. So I've had students where I've sent the recording to our reading specialist, just saying, hey, just take a listen to this, and can you give me your thoughts? So we use it that way, too.
That's a good idea. Does anyone have any comments?
I would just like to say, as the only elementary school teacher here, I am familiar a little bit with Seesaw, but what a great presentation from both of you tonight, from Rachel and Amy. And I just want to say that, you know, it's so great for the public to be able to see exactly how this program works on a hand-on kind of way. So thank you for presenting that tonight. And I know that Dr. Semmel has pledged to have more of these types of presentations from teachers in the district and with all the great programs that you guys are using, especially technology-related ones. So thank you again for presenting such a wonderful hand-on presentation tonight.
Anyone else? Amy? It's Allison, squeaky Mara. I directly benefited from Amy's efforts on Seesaw, having a second grader at Tashaw. Amy, I think to answer Lucinda's question, what is the program that they use for the reading assessment? I don't think it's on the Seesaw platform. I think there's another one, where I just heard Lexi get an assignment where she had to read it and read it back in the recording, and then the teacher can check the fluency on that. Is that on?
That's, that is a website we use called RazKids that has leveled libraries that we can assign for kids to read, digital ebooks to read. But there is an assessment piece on there where they can, the teacher can send them a specific book, and they record it and answer some questions about it. So we can assign that through Seesaw. So that's another great thing about Seesaw. You can post here, we want you to go do this today, and it'll send them to wherever they, you know, wherever they need to go.
And that's the one where there is a huge amount of excitement, because it opens a new library, right?
Yes. Yes.
Lucinda, I just wanted to point out that what's really great is we just saw a special ed teacher and a classroom teacher using a platform that we purchased that is good for every child in our system. So I think that's a real plus of Seesaw, that every child can use it.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Amy and Rachel, thank you so much. It was very interesting, and we're happy to see that. Someone else have anything?
Yeah, Lucy. Yeah, I just had a quick question. Rachel, I think I picked up on this when you were talking. When you talk about the different levels that are possible and the differentiation that you're able to achieve, I was curious, is that, is that a systematic part of the software? Or do you literally have to create those different levels by incorporating more complex objects and such?
So as Amy showed the community and the library, and she had hearted that one activity. So one example of what you, what she could have done, or I could do, is I can save an activity that already exists, but then I can modify it. So then that one letter, I, letter project I showed, like I might send it to a particular student and just ask them to find the letters. But then the next student, I would add the direction of, you know, record yourself telling me the names. So yes, you do have to sort of save and modify. But it's, it's just like what you would do in the classroom, you know, to modify a circle activity or something like that. It's just one more step when you're in the library. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's, yeah, it was exactly what I was looking to hear. Thank you so much, and thank you both for coming and presenting.
Anyone else? Well, thank you, ladies. Thank you very much. Dr. Semmel, the next item on the agenda is the reopening update.
Yep, and every, every couple of weeks, we do a reopening update. I do want to congratulate both Gabby and Jack on the work with the We the People. But I had only mentioned Jack before, so I don't, I don't want to forget Gabby there. So they're both, their work on We the People. And I want to thank both Amy and Rachel for their presentation tonight. That was excellent, and I learned more about that platform myself tonight. So thank you for doing that and all the hard work that you guys are doing with your students and the teachers that you represent across this entire district. You guys are making us all proud. In terms of reopening, I want to start off by just mentioning the COVID cases in our dashboard. Just a reminder that our dashboard on our website, our reopening page of our website, that's kept up to date after every time that we have a case in our district. And so if you're interested in wondering about how many staff or students are in quarantine or currently positive, you're able to go onto that dashboard and take a look. When we do have a positive case, we do send out a message to everyone in the district. And this is something we've been doing throughout. But I did get a couple of questions about, are there times where we don't send out a message? And there are, that's when we have a case where there was no additional close contacts made. So we only send out information to everyone in the district when we have close contacts that occurred because of that case. But rest assured, on the dashboard, everything is being counted there. So I think that's important to note, because there has been a couple of questions about that. There was a situation at one of our schools a few weeks back, where we did actually have more than one individual in a classroom who was positive. And that's something that we have to always pay attention to. So when that happened, we did have our Director of Nursing, Lynn Steinberg, call the Department of Public Health and just say, hey, we seem to have a couple of cases, few cases in this particular class. They went over the information. There was no additional work that the Department of Public Health wanted us to do. But obviously, it's something that we paid attention to and we continue to pay attention to. But that does seem to be a unique situation that occurred so far in our district. But given all the talk of new variants and all these different things, we just think it's important to continue to pay very close attention to all that. Another question I get a lot recently is about plans moving forward and adding Wednesdays. So you actually heard that even in the, in the communication that Ms. Marcell talked about. So I have received some of those emails. We do know that our, our elementary teacher, students are back four days a week. So they're the most consistent group, and that's been our major push because of the age of those learners and the importance for them to be in the classroom. One thing that we did at the high school level to bring more students back is they sent a survey out to all parents, asking if they'd like their child to come back for four days of in-person learning. As a reminder, the high school and middle school is on hybrids, so they're A-day, B-day. They received, I believe, about 277 responses of kids who wanted to come back. So the high school administration did actually a lot of work trying to make sure, looking at every specific kid, how their attendance in the class would affect the overall population of the class, and making sure we could still keep our distances there. So they were actually able to accommodate all 277 requests for high school kids coming back four days a week. So that's, that's been very positive in terms of that. People have asked me about, well, what about the middle schools? Well, the middle schools have actually had to take a little bit of a different tactic, because there's more students who are, who have chosen to be in hybrid than remote learning at the middle school. So the classrooms at the middle school are already larger than the classrooms were at the high school. So there was more space at the high school to bring kids back. At the middle school, the tactic has been to identify children who are really falling behind, who are disengaged from the work, you know, being at home so much. And our school counselors, administrators have been reaching out to those families to bring them in for four days, so we can try to keep those students on track. It might not seem fair to kids who want to come back for four days, but we really do need to make sure we're getting all of our students who could be really getting behind and stay on top of that. So with that said, in terms of Wednesdays themselves, I have been having conversations with my reopening team about bringing students back on Wednesdays. I will tell you, as you've heard me say before, I'm on a weekly call with the Department of Public Health. They're taking this pandemic still, week by week. So they're saying they don't know what's going to happen next week. They don't know how the viruses are going, is going to interact and act. They talk about this, these new variants, and they don't know how that's actually going to impact the number of cases. So they're not very future-looking in terms of, oh, yeah, cases are on the decline, so therefore you should do this. That's not what they're telling us. So as a reopening committee, we're talking about planning. And I want to be really careful how I say this. We're talking about planning to bring kids back more on Wednesdays in the future. Probably, we're looking at a target date of late March. But even though I say planning, for anybody listening, that doesn't mean the plan will be executed. It just means that we're getting ready if we are able to bring kids back on Wednesdays. All right, so if the numbers continue to be moving in a positive direction, the reopening committee will continue to talk about that, and if we can, execute the plan.
Can I just ask one question right there? When you say Wednesdays, does that mean like the A cohort comes in on one Wednesday, and the next week the B cohort comes in on Wednesdays?
Yeah, that, so if it was elementary school, let's start with that. We would have, potentially have the elementary students coming in on Wednesdays as well. Now, we can talk about whether that's a half day or it's a whole day. Because I will tell you, you listen to Amy and Rachel talk about using Seesaw. Well, there's a lot of time that they're putting into developing those. So that those half-days that we're giving to teachers are much appreciated. So we need to keep in the back of the mind, our mind, how, whether or not we should continue that going, depending on where we are with the pandemic. But the elementary kids would come on on Wednesdays. For the hybrid, yes, we would have to have Wednesdays be an A-day and then a B-day. And we're talking about how that would rotate. Some of our parents are concerned, especially our cohort A parents, that they lost more A-days than B-days. Some have been kind of keeping tallies and a scorecard. And I think the numbers, well, I don't know if I counted today, but we were somewhere around a ratio of 25 to 30. So A-days have had fewer in-person days. So if I was an A-day parent listening right now, they would probably prefer that I say on those Wednesdays, we'll do a few of those A-days first, to give them a chance to kind of catch up to in-person learning. Those are some of the things we need to talk about at the reopening committee, to kind of hammer that down. But I, when I work with the reopening committee, they know I have to be careful what I say at these public meetings, because I'm not saying we're coming back on Wednesdays. If anybody's hearing that, that is not what I'm saying. Saying we're planning for it, and if we can execute it, we will. All right, so I don't want to give false hope to people, but you'd also be disappointed if you weren't thinking about the future. So we, so I just wanted to give that, that information. The vaccines is the next part of this. The vaccines, I think, has a big impact on us being able to move forward. I'm happy to see that our folks who are 65 years and older in the state will be able to get their vaccines. I believe starting Thursday is what the governor said. We have been told, and we prepared it, that anybody in our school system who is 65 years and older will be able to be uploaded into the VAM system and be able to start getting their vaccines. We looked at the numbers, it's about 8% of our 1,000 employees are in that range. When you take all of our classifications from food service to terrorists to teachers, it's about 8% of our population. However, I personally believe that our teachers should be brought higher up on the priority level right now. We talk as a state about the importance of our schools remaining open. In order to do that, our teachers need to be vaccinated. It would make... It would make the anxiety level of our teachers, I think, drop significantly, and I believe it should be a priority. And it would be a game changer when we get our, our teachers vaccinated. They would need both shots, and they would need a couple of weeks after the second shot to be fully vaccinated. But that would be a game changer to opening our schools. So anybody who has any influence with the governor and wants to continue to encourage that our teaching staff gets vaccinated, by all means, reach out. That'd be great. And that is my update. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or...
All right, does anyone have a question for Dr. Semel? No? Okay. All right, Marty, we're going to move on to budget discussion and approval. Follow Marty.
All right, so budget discussion. We're going to talk again about the budget tonight. And Michelle is bringing up the presentation. I'm just making sure that the clicker is working. Turn it on. Hold on one second. The clicker is being temperamental. When we get that, as, as we're working on getting that set up, just to give you a recap or a recapitulation of our budget at this point. In December, I brought you through a lengthy budget proposal, presentation, and that's on our website. So people can go back to our website and see the, that long presentation. You also heard from all of our department chairs. They talked about at length, everything in the budget proposal. In January, we received the operational review that was completed on January 4th. And the Board of Education and Administration thought it would be a good idea to pause before voting to make sure that anything in the operational review, we took it to consideration for the budget. Tonight, I will walk you through a condensed version of the presentation. And for those of you watching at home, the, yep, there's, clicker's working now. For those of you looking at home, this presentation will be on your screen, but it's also on our website under the Board of Education tab, under Budget. So if you go to Board of Education and Budget, you'll see the, the PowerPoint presentation there. So, let me get started. What are we, what's the request? We are requesting $113,751,421, which is a 4.33% increase. As I said, we're going to walk you through the major drivers of this particular request. And you should see that most of our request is actually in required areas, areas that I don't have or you don't have much control over. And although, although the 4.33% budget may seem high, when you back out the monies that I'm going to talk about, I think you'll see that the request is actually quite modest. So to start, we're going to start big picture and then start to move down a little bit. So the big picture is 82% of our entire budget is benefits and salaries. That's 82%, and we're not uncommon to most school districts. A lot of school districts are right about that same, same range. Another 10% is actually other purchased services, which is where busing is a major component. So when you start to, when you talk about that, 92% of our budget is just in those three, three areas. Digging down a little deeper, this slide shows the primary budget drivers of this 4.33% increase. The benefits and transportation are making up the lion's share of this budget increase. You see that we have $1.9 million increase in benefits and a $973,000 in transportation. I want to, I'm going to mention insurance a little bit more later in the presentation. But this, these benefits package is assuming an 8% increase year over year from our current 2021 budget. All right? We put that in there because our consultant started us at 6% and said you should use 6. That was way back in, I want to say October. Then it became, you know what, 8% is more realistic because we were also being told the town had 11% as an increase that they were being given. So at this point, we're hearing that there could be some positive news and that the number might be actually lower than our first number. But the hard thing about insurance is you don't get a final quote until much later in the process. And so we need to be safe when you put a budget together because as it goes through the process, increasing the budget later on is never a good idea. But when you find additional savings, that's always, that's always a positive thing. So we want to continue to play it safe, and we'll talk more about this a little bit later as well. I will speak to it at a future slide. You can see some of these other items on this particular primary budget driver slide I'll mention more in the future as well. But I think it's important to know how big benefits and transportation is of that entire $4.7 million. It's a big part. Until, in terms of net FTE change, net FTE change means take the positions we're recommending that are added and subtract the positions that we're reducing, and that's the net FTE. So as you remember from our budget presentation, we added, we're adding a math interventionist at the middle school, a half math interventionist at the elementary school, so on and so forth. The number of adds are 11.25 FTEs. That's approximately $867,000. At the same time, we looked at the enrollment of all the schools, and we believe we are able to reduce Booth Hill, Daniels Farm, Jane Ryan, Middlebrook, and 1.0 at the high school for a reduction of 6, 6.0 reductions. So therefore, our total net FTE is 5.25 FTEs or $477,000. I do want to remind people, when I say we're adding back one literacy interventionist at the elementary school, you had 12.6 in 1920. In 2021, you had eight. Because of the reductions that you had to take, you reduced your literacy interventionist quite a bit. So I'm adding one back to begin to rebuild what we have. These are positions that, I will tell you, our teachers and our principals and myself feel confident that we need and will help our students. Same thing with the math, folks. We had 6.5 math interventionist K5 in 1920. In 20, in 2021, we have 3.5. We're adding back a half of a math interventionist at the elementary school. It's a modest increase when we're trying to rebuild. So I think that's important to note. Excuse me. All the other positions, we did talk about quite a bit along the process, but I wanted to just mention a few of those right there. I did show you this slide. This was a slide about the enrollment at the elementary schools. This was just as a reminder how we came to decide that we could reduce class sizes. The red triangles were reductions, the green pluses were additions, and the ovals were classes that were right on the board of being able to make a decision up or down. So this is how we made our decisions around reducing staff. All right, so getting a little bit more granular. Getting a little bit more granular. We, there's been a lot of conversation about special revenue and the lunch accounts. So this particular slide talks about the deficiencies there are in the strings and band account and the inter-district account and your lunch account. There was $140,000 deficit that we were projecting for next year in your strings and band account. It's actually in your, pretty much in your current budget year as well. You have a deficit built into your strings and band account. You have a deficit built into your inter-district account and your lunch account. Having deficits built into your account is not a good budgeting practice. It's part of why we got into a situation that we got into when the administration was doing some budget deficit, deficit budgeting. So we need to rectify that issue. $430,000, we believe, in our budget for these deficiencies would make the 21, 22 budget whole. As we sit here on December, February night. You'll see that out of the 4.33% that we're recommending, 0.39% of that 4.33% is to just deal with these deficits. People have asked, well, what happens if we increase the fees? Well, that's a good question. I think the fees may have stayed stagnant for a little too long. In order to cover the complete deficiency, the strings and band parents would have to pay, instead of $125, they would have to pay $475. That's what it would have to do to eliminate the deficiency completely. And the tech act, the inter-des, the inter-district, the parents are paying $3,000. They need to pay $4,060 to eliminate that completely. So what we put into the budget is the, the district covering the entire deficiency at this point. We haven't talked about raising fees. The Board of Education at some point down this road could talk about raising the fees for these programs, depending on how this budget process goes. If you, you know, if you understand what I'm saying, if, if you reduced in some way by your budget, you can look to see if fees would balance part of that production. So you don't have to just choose one or the other. You don't have to cover the entire deficiency, but you also don't have to put the entire deficiency on the parents. Because I do believe if you put a $475 bill on a parent for a band and strings, you actually may see a reduction in the number of kids who want to participate. Well, that actually could mean that you have to reduce a staff member if you don't have enough participation. And then your, whoever you hired as your last in the district band person would end up losing their position. So you do, there's, there's, it's more complicated than just, well, we'll just have people pay more money. It's, it's more complicated than that. So anyways, from this particular piece, $430,000 is in the budget. It, it accounts for 0.39% of the 4.33 of the increase. Michelle, next slide. All right, so the next thing is transportation. Here's another very big driver. If I can explain this correctly, in 1920, there was a pandemic. And from March to June, there was no busing. And the district received a $917,000 credit for transportation. But the credit came on July 1st of the 2021 year, and so it was applied to the 2021 budget. And therefore, the administration reduced the transportation line by that 917. And I believe used the 917 to avoid a whole bunch more lanes. But now, that 917,000 has to be made up. And so that's why there's a significant increase in the transportation line item of 18.79%. It's not because our bus company has gone crazy on the contract. That's not it. It's because of this, this, yeah, some people call it a funding cliff. I'm not sure if it would be called a funding cliff, but it certainly created this issue. You see that that's almost, the transportation alone is almost 1% of the 4.33% increase. So that is a big chunk. And so when I say that our actual request is quite modest, it's because there's things like this that I have, we have to do because the transportation has to be paid. So that's, that's that one. The next one is, I call other big rocks. So the magnet school, we, we now have to pay, and actually it happened in this school year. There's been a dispute with the Bridgeport Public Schools. And Bridgeport has not been paying us for their kids who've come to Agside, and we have not been paying them for our kids who go to their magnet schools. It's been a few years. Nobody's been paying anybody. Well, we needed to resolve this, and it's been more than just the town of Trumbull who's been involved with this. There's other towns who got involved with the same suit. Well, it was settled. And then, and I'm sorry I didn't know this in advance, then we had to pay Bridgeport $245,000 for the magnet schools. The money that comes from Bridgeport to Trumbull for Agside does not come in as a revenue to the Board of Education. Goes to the town. So I don't have any offsetting money on this, on this settlement suit. If it was they, if we got the money and then we had to pay them, it would be like a, maybe a balancing act. I think actually we'd probably be to the positive. I think the Agside money coming from Bridgeport is higher. But it's a revenue stream that goes to the town. We don't see it coming to the Board of Education. But the magnet school tuition that we pay does go from our budget. Okay? So that's why I want to make that clear, but that's why we have to increase because now that we have this settlement, that money, that cost in our budget's back. So if I, if we had done nothing and never settled the suit, it would have actually been better to your budget. But that's not good to, to have a suit like that out there just continuing. So that's 0.22% of your increase, the 4.33. And then insurance, I mentioned it before, but that the 6% to the 8% is another 0.27% of, of your budget. If we get good news later on down the process, we are certainly open to saying, here's our, here's our actual bill for insurance. We're being told it could be even lower than the 6% that we originally put in. And that's, that's the challenge. We won't know until much later about the actual number. Can I, I'm going to move on.
Marty, if someone has a question, can they ask you now?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Okay, does anyone have a question? Marie, go ahead.
Marty, you did a great job explaining, which I have never did, the transportation. But I have a, so I have still a question. So I understand what you said now. That would make sense. Because we're not using Wednesdays and kids were not in school at the beginning of the year, is there a chance that we'll have maybe not as much money, but some money left? And again, it would come in after July 1st. Could there be a possibility?
It's a good question. I'll, I'm going to answer the question generally, and then Mr. Henderson, I think, can be more specific. We are, we are definitely getting a positive balance on our transportation. We are not going to spend all of our transportation budget. However, we're getting killed on our food service program, worse than our transportation. So Mr. Henderson, you want to give a few more details? Because I think you have that.
I, I got an update today on our transportation. And to date for this year, we have saved $477,000. And the latest month was January, and we saved $77,000 in that month. We get 50% of credit for those days where we don't have transportation. So it's good news, bad news. Kids aren't in the classroom. We get a rebate on transportation. However, they don't get as good an education as they could in the classroom.
The, the lunch program continues to run deficit.
The lunch program continues to run deficit. It was deficit at the start of 1920. It was minus 600 at the start of this year. And I believe it's, it's around minus 900,000 through this year. Well, I haven't got January's figures through December, and we still had more money owed to the town. It is a, a problem of a pandemic, but also prior to that, we had, going back to 15, 16... going back to, uh, fifteen, sixteen, we had basically break even. Then in the following three years, we had revenue short, shortfalls. Expenses were essentially flat and revenue was down about an average of five percent a year, which caused losses of between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars a year. And on top of that, we had allocations based on the Gibson report of two hundred and eighty-four thousand in the first year. That would be sixteen-seventeen, followed by charges of eighty thousand and eighty thousand. And I can't find supporting documentation except for the first allocation, which was in Mr. Santafani's, uh, report. So that basically exhausted the positive balance we had back at the end of, uh, nine, uh, nineteen, twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, which was approximately six hundred thousand dollars at the time.
Right, so the good news of the transportation unfortunately won't even balance the bad news of the food service. I'm hoping, and I hate to use the word hope, but we're not the only ones in this boat. And we're hoping that there's some relief coming from the federal government or the state government to, to dig us out. Otherwise, every, lots of municipalities are going to be herded from the food service situation.
Marty, I think what parents have to hear or the audience, you know, taxpayers, this is another one of those unfunded mandates. So I think what the audience and I know listening to my neighborhood, and I'm not saying it's a negative, but we are probably getting over a thousand lunches in our family, right? So whether you're a parent making twenty thousand or two hundred thousand in your family, you have the right right now during the pandemic to go and pick up those practices lunches. We are not against it as the board, but taxpayers have to understand if the state or the federal government doesn't reimburse us, you're right, we have to pay that bill.
Well, just, just, I want to be really clear on this. We actually benefit, and this could be a little confusing. So the USDA is actually subsidizing the cost of every meal that we give away. So what this, what I, we've been talking at the PTAs and the PTAs have done a great job getting the message out. But we actually want to give out as many meals as possible. Because every meal we give out, we get reimbursed. Every, I can tell you we get reimbursed fifty cents for a breakfast and a dollar, no.
So how's it working?
Well, the problem is our expenses end up being more than, like our people expenses end up being more than the reimbursement so far.
You mean the employees?
Yeah.
If you're a restaurant, you cover the cost of the food by how much you pay. But if you only fill your restaurant to twenty-five percent capacity, you're not going to make a profit overall. Because you have all your employees, your overhead, your medical to pay. And that's what we're faced with. Right now, we may be serving a thousand lunches, but regularly we serve twenty-seven hundred lunches or so. And that's what we need to make up.
Yeah.
And as many people as they pay, as wanted, can have lunch and/or breakfast. And the more we get, the better the financial situation becomes.
All right, and so not to digress too much from the actual budget, but that is something we've been paying attention to greatly. Mescinko has been paying attention to it, the principals. We are trying to reduce that deficit. And parents picking up meals is what we want. Many meals as possible. It sounds kind of, seems like it should be opposite, but that's, that's the way it is.
Scott, for some, I, I have one more, uh,
Sure.
we went on, and this is about the magnet school question.
Yeah.
So if you, at the risk of being a little redundant, I know you went through this a little bit, but could you explain the two hundred and forty-five thousand? What, what do those charges cover?
Right, so when we, um, send our students to the magnet schools, we pay a per pupil cost for each, each child that goes to a magnet school. So we're paying that particular cost. The magnet schools also get some money from the state. And so the magnet schools in general get, they take our money and they take the state money to be able to get their full tuition. So that's, that's what we're, we're paying. Yep?
And, uh, Marty, it's Scott, can I make another ques- ask another question?
Go ahead.
Yep, um, I, I also just want to be clear that, 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 although we referred to it as part of the settlement, the, the settlement was that we started to pay that tuition again, right? So, so this two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that you're looking at is tuition for next year, right? It's not, it's not like we're paying back tuition. This is just effective next year, we're going to start paying the tuition when we haven't been for a while. Is that right?
We're paying tuition this year and this is for next year's budget.
Okay.
Right, and the settlement, we actually, us, we basically broke even with Bridgeport. We basically owed them the same amount they owed us.
Right.
Called it a wash and stopped paying lawyer fees.
But now we're gonna, now, so now we're paying that tuition going forward for the kids that go to Fairchild Wheeler and, and, um, Discovery. And then, but they're also, not only Bridgeport, but all the other sending communities are paying their tuition to come to the agri-science program.
Correct, and the other communities have been paying for the Agside. It's just been Bridgeport who hasn't been. But again, that revenue goes straight to the town, not to the Board of Ed.
Yeah, that, that, that doesn't make sense, right? I don't know, I, that wouldn't be another special revenue account. The same way we take the tuition in for the tech act students, that should be, that should be set up to receive that as well. So we should, we should probably make that a topic in our next finance committee meeting.
Sure, if there's, if there's ways to do that, we, we could talk about that. But I just want to make it clear why we, we are now in this delta where we end up having to add more into our budget. So the next slide is on, I wanted to, to show you guys your approved, these are the final approved budgets that the Board of Ed has received over the past number of years. And as you can see, the, the budgets typically were in the, you know, in the low threes or, you know, high twos, sometimes mid-twos. That's been your typical approved by the, the final approved by the town numbers. But in sixteen-seventeen and seventeen-eighteen, I made those red because in those particular years, there was only an increase of one point seven-seven and one point four-two. I was, you know, obviously not here and I don't know all the specific details about the year sixteen-seventeen and seventeen-eighteen. Uh, they were challenging years. I actually do remember that was, uh, a very big significant budget crisis back in, uh, in, in the state. So that could be part of this. But when those budgets came in that low, it's possible that that's where you started to see your issues with money. Because as we know, our budgets increase by a percentage. And so when you only have one point seven-seven or one point four-two, you end up having to try to catch up. And if you don't catch up, you end up falling behind. And so I just wanted to point that out because it, I thought it was interesting when those two years came in that low. And it's around the time you also started to see some deficit spending in your two oh five accounts. I'm not an accountant or an analyst, but I wanted to point out that those two years may have impacted your, your overall budget. But again, I'm not an accountant. My, my focus is on education, so.
Like the rest of us.
Right, the next, the next slide is, I've shown it before, I think it's important. This one compares where Trumbull is to the rest of the dirts. And it's about twelve hundred dollars less per child than the average in dirt beat. And remember, dirt beat just means, these are all the same, these are all the districts that are about the same economics of, of Trumbull. And so at twelve hundred dollars per less, twelve hundred dollars less than the average, it's about sixty-seven hundred children, we're, we're, our budget's about eight million dollars below the average. I'm not saying that this board needs to add eight million dollars to the budget. I'm, I'm only recommending four million. But I think it's important in terms of an efficiency standpoint to point out that Trumbull is not overspending. They're being efficient with their money. The next, uh, slide actually compares you, Trumbull, to Fairfield County. And this is where it gets pretty significant between where Trumbull is and the average. There's actually a twenty-eight hundred dollars difference between Trumbull and the average here. And if you multiply that times a sixty-seven hundred kids, you're actually at about nineteen million dollars. So in order to catch up to your, to the Fairfield cost per pupil, it's about nineteen million dollars to get there. So I show this again to, to say, it's just another data point. I'm sure other people would say, well, we're not Westbin or Greenwich or Westport or those places. Understand, we're not even close to the average though. So you're not overspending on your children. You heard Dr. Iwaniki talk about how great the programs are and how well the kids are learning in class. So I think this is a triumph, that the district is doing well, being well below the average. But at some point, you do get too low and you end up having to cut staff that you don't want to come. So I wanted to point that out. The next slide is just around some of the surrounding communities that I'm aware of right now. Trumbull, we're requesting four point three-three. Last, the current year's actual is two point seven-four. Monroe actually passed, the board passed their budget at five point eight-five and last year they had a four point eight-eight. Uh, Fairfield passed their budget at five point one-nine and last year they had three point nine. And Shelton came in at two point nine-nine and their actual this year was three point nine-nine. So the four point three-three is not even out of the range of some of our towns that are surrounding us. Just to, I don't, unfortunately, the list isn't any longer than this right now. But as it continues, we get data and we'll continue to add to that. So I'm gonna go to my summary page. So in summary, here's the four point three-three percent listed by all these big rocks. You've got salaries and benefits, uh, benefits in particular taking up a lot of that four point three-three. You've got the net FTE change, the special revenue accounts, that transportation credit. All these rocks add up to a total of four point three-three percent. So again, what I think I'm showing you is that our actual request, trying to add staff and add programs is quite modest. Because most of my four point three-three percent request to you is trying to take care of required situations. Whether they be salaries and benefits, the special revenue accounts, the transportation credit, the magnet schools, a lot of that is eating up this four point three-three percent. I wish I could put more of it into staff because it would make a world of difference. But we need to take care of these budget problems so we can move forward. I think there was a speaker earlier on who said we need to deal with the budget issues so we can build from a strong foundation. And I completely agree, we need to build from a strong foundation. So the next steps, and then we'll answer any more questions you might have, is February tenth, I hope, or this week, we'll submit the, an approved budget from the Board of Education to the first selectman. The first selectman, as I understand the charter, needs to submit their, uh, her budget to the Board of Finance by March first. By April twelfth, the Board of Finance needs to vote on the budget. By May tenth, the town council needs to adopt the budget. And by June first, the budget becomes effective. There's a bunch of meetings and different things that happen in between, but those are some of the, the big topics there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, I'm sorry if I went on too long.
Marty, just, just go over something for me. When you first started doing the budget, it became, it was a three-nine-four, was that correct?
Yes.
And then tell, tell us what happened to bring it to the four over the four?
Uh, the most significant thing, significant thing that occurred was we took the insurance adjustment from six percent to eight percent. That was a good, uh, that was the majority of that increase. Paul could talk more about some of the other changes if you want to hear them, but that's the, that's the lion's share of going from three-nine-four to four-three-three. There was a couple of other things in there that, some smaller adjustments. The other bigger one would be the, uh, the payroll person that we added to the budget. But those two things are really the, the two mouse directions. That was a recommendation from the review, yeah. And the review also recommended things like an HR director, but we had already put that in the budget. So that, we didn't have to add it after the review came out. Any other questions? I guess I have some good questions so far.
I have a question. How confident are we with the en- how confident are we with the enrollment for kindergarten? I know this was kind of a weird year where people held students back. Where are we in that process?
Great question. In my original budget presentation, I made a note. If you go back to my original one, it said, I don't have a high confidence in my kindergarten numbers yet. Uh, because like you say, some kid, some parents did keep their kids out of kindergarten this year. So, uh, Ms. Heffley has been involved in actually creating a complete online process for kindergarten registration. I forget the exact date when we're unleashing that, but it's coming. It's coming soon. And once we're able to unleash that and get parents to register online, we'll, we'll have a much better understanding. Yep?
Okay, Scott or Jackie or Mike?
So Marty, actually, since we don't know about kindergarten, we could need to add staff in kindergarten.
Yes.
All right, because you cut them, you know, wherever you could. So I think it's something we have to always think of, you know, usually keeping some FTE money.
We did try to be sparing about cutting kindergarten classes. Bob?
Yeah, um, Paul, I was just wondering if, if we might, uh, go back to the lunch discussion just for a second. Because you, you said something that was interesting to me that I think we should highlight, which is the, the change from the, the surplus that we had several years ago, was not just the result of, I think that you said this, that it wasn't just the result of the, um, increased allocations that had been recommended in the Gibson report, but also, uh, a decrease in, in revenue. Can you, i- i- did I hear that right and could you speak to that?
Yes, I, I, I'm reading from, uh, a note Marty sent to you over the weekend. And the fund balance at, uh, this, this first of July of, uh, twenty-sixteen was six hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. And the fund balance three years later, on July first, uh, twenty-nineteen, was negative eighty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-one. Uh, that was accounted for by four hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of allocations. And, uh, an operating income of minus a hundred and fifty-six thousand in sixteen-seventeen, minus, uh, almost thirty thousand in seventeen-eighteen, and, uh, about ninety-two thousand negative in eighteen-nineteen. So it was a combination of, of reduced, reduced revenue really because expenses were flat, uh, uh, or they were actually down slightly during those three years, while, uh, operating revenue was, uh, down five percent. And just prior to the, the start of, uh, school year sixteen-seventeen, uh, the prior year of fifteen-sixteen, it was fairly a break even operation.
Paul, those allocations, were they to the lunch program or were they?
They were to the lunch program, Jackie. Uh, the two hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-six was broken out. Uh, I, I believe it was page sixty-four, sixty-five of Mr. Santafani's report. He did not find any backup for, for the eighty thousand dollar allocations both in seventeen-eighteen and eighteen-nineteen.
Thank you.
But those were the allocations like the, the rent and, you know, other, other expenses of operating?
In that first year, yes, but in the, in the following two years, it was two round, they, they were the same numbers, they were round numbers. And that to me doesn't say they were allocations. They were, take this amount of money and charge it to a lunch program.
Right. Um, so I also noted, uh, in, in Marty's presentation that the, the four hundred and thirty thousand dollars that you've got budgeted to, um, essentially not slip into any further deficit in the special accounts going forward, that, uh, what, did I see it, that there was a couple of hundred thousand dollars of that allocated to, uh, cover the lunch program as well? So it's not just the, not just special revenue accounts?
Yes, it was, it was- Yes, it was, it was to cover the lunch account and, and, uh, special revenue accounts. But that, that is only what I would term a stopgap, because, uh, that would only cover the deficit for those for twenty-one, twenty-two. Most likely going forward, we would have to have a more aggressive program, uh, especially in the school lunch to pay down that deficit.
Right. And, yeah, and, and I think that the enlightening thing for me this time around was that it was also, it was also a revenue shortfall, because I think we all had this impression that the lunch program was going gangbusters, right? And that, that, that's why we felt the ability to transfer, um, more expenses there or to allocate more expenses there. But it wasn't actually, it was starting to, uh, you know, as you said, at best break even.
Well, what, what was different, I seen, taking out the allocations, the operating expenses were always, were either stable or slightly declined over that time period, which is remarkable.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry to belabor the point, but it's obviously, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a big important piece of something that needs to get corrected going forward. So I just wanted to make sure we, we vetted that. Thank you very much for that.
Anyone else with a question? Mike Ward, question?
Just to, uh, an observation, several years ago, and if you remember, we did have a discussion about increasing the prices for lunches. And at that time, we felt, uh, enough is enough. Every year it was the nickel, then it was fifteen, then it was ten cents, which probably made it, you know, increased the revenue if we increased the lunches. We tried to keep the lunches reasonable and fair. Most of Fairfield County lunches, we, we were comparing ourselves to other communities and we were in the low end. So that might have contributed towards some of the revenue shortfall. However, your presentation, uh, tonight by the superintendent, I think is excellent. We're on our, we're on our way of doing what we think we should be doing. And of course, the big thing will be what happens in the next several months. I think it was fair and equitable. And I hope that people in the community understand, the last several meetings, we've been getting a lot of misinformation about the Board of Education and our role and responsibility. As a board member, we are responsible for the education of the boys and students we serve, boys and girls. And that was our primary function. The administration has their function and their responsibility. And the people responsible for it should have done their job better. So I hope that people in the community understand, we as board members dedicate ourselves to what is happening in the classroom. Majority of our information is given to us by the superintendent and central office. And I see right now, our central office is top shelf and we should all support them the next several months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, if we're all set, if there are no other questions for Paul or Marty, I'm going to take the vote right now, okay? Um, I want to make a, I need a motion to accept and approve the budget. Timmy, you want to do that for me?
Yeah, I can make that motion. If I make a motion to accept the budget, um, as presented, uh, for two, for twenty twenty-one?
I need a-
Twenty-one, twenty-two?
I, I will need a second.
Okay, I can second.
Marie, can you second? Okay, so there are no further discussions?
Could I just ask a question? Should we possibly say we're, this superintendent's budget, so we know that's the budget we're talking about? When we go back to read the motion?
Sometimes it's called the superintendent's proposed budget.
Yeah, that's why, Marty, that's what I was looking for.
I would make the motion to approve the superintendent's proposed budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I can second that.
Marie, second, okay. Okay, no other-
I did have one more question.
Go ahead.
So we talked a little bit about the pay for play, um, for exercise instruments, the particular kind at home. And currently, we are funded to not change that price at all for parents. So I just want to know that going forward, if we vote on this budget tonight and we approve the budget, how can we then change that and change that at all? How, how can you explain that to us?
Yeah, I mean, if the board would like us to investigate a different pricing structure, we can absolutely bring some different pricing structures. So we could, we could recommend, uh, what kind of prices we think would be a fair increase, that could be provided, that would be at, at each of these levels. And I think you'd probably want to include athletics in that. I doubt you'd want to just leave athletics out and do strings and band.
I feel like athletics have gotten some raises over the past couple of years and it doesn't look like the band has gotten any. And it, and to speak with what you had said before, it looked like that it has not been raised in quite a big of a time.
It doesn't look like it, right. And, uh, but I think we should, if we're going to look at the other things, we should at least look at the athletics. Because I think there might be some small deficits that have been created in athletics as well. So it's, it's at least worth looking at it. And you should look at your price, your lunch price tool. There's actually a state, uh, tool that you have to use to be equitable. And so your, your lunch prices have to be within a certain target range. And so it's something that Mr. Hendricks and I are used to doing. You, you run it through a, a state calculator, uh, and it comes out with what your recommended pricing should be. And Paul usually does that work, so if he could spot, speak more, you know, confidently about that. But we should probably talk about a raise to food prices if it's warranted.
Marty, just to answer something that Tim said, over, yes, bands and strings may look lower than all the others, but for the last three or four years, we reduced all the amount of money parents were paying. So if you go back, you will see that the boards had set up a process where everything was reduced. So that may help you as you come up with things.
Okay, thank you.
I also, uh, sorry, uh, Lucinda, can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, um, I, I, I'm not sure it's a question, it might be more of a statement. I, I think that we also, you know, knowing that if we approve this, uh, recommended budget tonight, it's going to go forth through the rest of the process and it's going to come back to us at some point. And we're probably going to have to make decisions down the road. And I would like to suggest that, um, that there's a working group or some, some group of us that get together and start, um, discussing and brainstorming now about how to react to those things. And also to consider things like the increase of fees, or, or any other kind of structural saving changes that we can make. I was very frustrated by this process in my first year through, because we're here trying to, to create the most efficient budget that we can, at the same time that we're in this enormous time crunch to get it all done. And I think we should take the time, when we have it, to, to brainstorm about things we could change and savings we might be able to find.
Let me, let me respond to that. First of all, anytime any one of us wants to come in and talk to Paul or Marty, you can. We have to make decisions as a group at a, in public at a meeting. So we have to discuss this. All of us have to hear what we're brainstorming about and why we think we should do different things. If we're going to cut somewhere, usually the person would come to a board meeting and say, this is what I'm going to do and this is why I think it's a good idea. But we all have to hear that together. That doesn't mean that you can't call or speak to the superintendent or the business director. Because I think it went well when everyone called and asked the questions on the budget. Because they had specific questions that they didn't understand and they made their personal calls to the superintendent and the business director. And I think everyone who said it to me told me that went well for them. So if that's, if they're comfortable doing that, I would recommend that you continue. Once we get back our budget, whatever it's going to be, then we will be thinking in our, to ourselves. And you know that if we can talk in, uh, maybe we talk in groups of three, because we never want to have a forum, because that's a meeting. So we have to make sure that we share, you know, with each other or, you know, at a different point. But everything should get shared here in public. And that's what I, I think is best, unless you want to speak to Marty or Paul on your own. I think that's the thing we can do.
I'm totally, I'm totally supportive of the public, uh, exchange. I'd be happy for it to happen during, you know, finance committee meetings or, um, or any other way. I just, my point is that I think as a board, we need to start thinking long-term and, uh, major, you know, structural shifts. Start thinking about the big things that we might do next year, so that we're not up against it. So, yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate that, that point, Lucinda.
You have to remember too, there's, uh, people on this board that's been on the board, Mike's been on the board for twelve years. They know how to, what's coming down the pipe more or less. And, you know, they, they will call us, they will tell us. And we'll all have conversations with the superintendent and the business director. And it gets back to all of us some way. So I think that's a good thing too.
And Scott, I think whatever, whoever's on the finance, uh, like I know what we've done for you. What you see here, what you, we presented to the board, doesn't improve the hours and hours the Pricken team has done it, uh, you know, behind closed doors. So definitely the finance committee could definitely look at all that, do all that work. I hate to say it, we each do our own committee work and then present it to us and then they have to discuss it. Because a lot of this does have to be, having been on the board, a little bit disappointed. We always did the right thing. We assumed we were doing the right thing. We zeroed out at the end of the year and definitely if we can get more detail, all of us would be happy with that. And the only other thing, I, I think we have to let the taxpayers know. I know in one of my retired meetings this week, because we're also negotiating a new contract for retired teachers. So thirty-three thousand of us were frozen this year. And one of our insurance people, one of the teachers, as the insurance committee said, all insurances like Anthem, Cigna, made a boatload of money during COVID. And I'm hoping that we will see a lower number of our insurance and we can have a lower percentage. But that again, we don't know. We're all hoping for it.
And I would suggest, if you do tonight vote on this budget in a positive, your goal would be to support that four point three three percent. I do believe in planning, you know, it's always an important thing to do, to have contingency plans. And to understand that my administrative team will be thinking about contingency plans that we want to bring to you too. Because we're the ones who are employed to do this work, so we, we come to work every day to do this work. And so as we move down this process, we will have thought about this as well. And we love that we can work with the Board of Education members as, as partners to, you know, to continue to make Trumbull Public Schools a great place to, to learn, so.
And I have to say, we all do what we need to do. When we look at these, you're all going to go home tonight, all of us. We're going to look at this and we're going to be thinking about what's going to happen in the future with this. So as we do that, we will go through this budget in our own heads and think about what's going to happen if we get X amount of money cut or this amount of money. So that will be on your mind. And we will discuss those in our subcommittee meetings. And we, and those meetings are public also. We talk in curriculum, we talk in, um, finance. So we know what's going to happen down the road more or less. But we will, we'll give our suggestions out and I think it's a good idea that we all talk about it. And please share your ideas with Marty and Paul. I think the way you shared your ideas, and I thank all of you for doing that, your questions and your calls about the budget now, and it made it much clearer for us. Because everyone was very upset with going over the, you know, we, we started at the three nine four, we thought that was going to be it. And then when Marty said the consultant came back and said, no, you've got to go to eight percent, well, that pushed us over. Then with the operational review, you need a payroll person. And in my eyes, a payroll person is someone with great financial acumen. And you have to hire somebody who is very astute at that, yes. And so that's another, that was another add-on for us, or we would have come in at a lower rate, I think. But that came in after. Am I correct, Dr. Simmel?
Correct.
Okay, so we're doing the best that we can. And I think your presentation was right on. I think you are right, it was modest. And we're trying our best to do what we can. So this board has worked very well this year. There's no board that's done what we've done. Working through a pandemic, working through hiring all top positions, we've done a lot of work, okay? And it takes time and I want to call you, I think it's all done. So I am going to take this vote right now. Okay, um, I want Tim to restate the motion again so we can all hear it. And Marie will second as she did before.
So the emotion, the motion was to approve the superintendent's proposed budget for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
Second?
And I can second.
Marie seconds it. Okay, now we're going to go down for the vote. Tim?
Uh, I, I, I approve. I, I say yes.
Marie?
Yes, in favor.
Mike?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie?
Yes, in favor.
Scott?
Yes, in favor.
Allison?
Yes, in favor.
And Lucinda? Yes, in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you all. Okay, Dr. Simmel, we'll move from here. Okay, thanks everyone. And our next item on the agenda is the operational review update. Mr. Hendrickson?
In front of you, you should have a detailed report on, uh, the business office actions in relation to the sixty-eight recommendations of Mr. Santafani's operational, uh, review. These will be, these are posted on our website and I will update you at the first board meeting of each month. Now to go over the sixty-eight recommendations, two are actually related to town things that should be done. Thirty-five of the recommendations have already been done. Sixteen are in progress and fifteen, we have just not had time to get to. In going over these, I'd like to emphasize, uh, Mr. Santafani, in his review, found no malfeasance or misappropriation by any employee of the Board of Education. And also in his report, there were several duplicate mentions of recommendations. Those specifically relate to transfers, purchases, three-year averages of certain items. If you take all those out, you probably get down to fifty-five, but that is not to diminish the impact. And a couple of the recommendations were what I would term trivial. Buy a stamp and stamp your invoices as paid. Well, we did that, but, so we don't pay it twice. But the accounts payable clerk in the account, in my office staples the invoice to the, to the copy of the check and files it. So there's no possibility of paying it twice. Uh, go over specific items we have done. On the twentieth of January, we, we met, uh, for over an hour, well over an hour, a Dr. Semmel, myself and several people with the business, uh, from the business office to discuss with Kevin Boba, the town purchasing managers of the procedures currently in effect. However, Kevin, uh, told us that those, uh, procedures were being reevaluated and the limits for certain things such as going out to bid, having three quotes, or going for RFP are being expanded. Also, I would remind the board that, uh, there were twelve instances that the purchasing guidelines were not followed. That was over a three-year period. That would amount to one purchase per quarter. Also regarding transfers, we, I have not had, done any transfers yet through this year's budget. Most likely with, uh, at the next meeting, I will bring forward transfers. As I've indicated in the past, I like to have several months of operations under my belt so I can develop a trend to, uh, figure out when transfers are most prudently done. Because once we start making transfers, it's hard to follow what the exact spend was for a specific item and, and the waters tend to become muddled. Uh, there was another, uh, comment about debt issuance, specifically the TD loans. We have abandoned that process. And in addition, it was also recommended that we break out the loans in our financial reporting. You will see in your budget that that is broken out. It is, uh, towards the end of, uh, the detailed report, it breaks it out, both principal and interest. Also, uh, position control. On, uh, the third of February, I had an hour conversation with a representative of Munis. I'm waiting his, uh, reply for training the bio office on how to use Munis in position control, working with HR. working with HR. That way, we can have an accurate and real-time count of FTVs, and also have control of those positions, in that nobody can be hired unless Dr. Simmel or I approve. And once a vacant position shows up, Dr. Simmel or I can choose to reduce the headcount. It would also add the flexibility of creating FTE queries by location or by department, so we don't have to laboriously and wastefully go through and count people in payroll. Nova time, we had a kickoff call on last Friday for a little over an hour. We developed a project plan. We have another call tomorrow. And our goal on both Nova time and Munis is to have those up and operational by the start of the next fiscal year, which is July 1st. There were also comments in the report on my monthly reports, or more generally, business office reports, that they should be made monthly, which I have, and my predecessors have been doing. And also to include something called the transportation fund, which doesn't exist. I have included all the funds, the operating funds, special revenue funds, and we are posting those on our website. And we are transmitting those to Town Hall for posting on their website and for their retention. So that's a brief overview of what we've done so far. I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, before we start with the questions, Michelle, go to the top of this. This is available on the website. Am I correct, Dr. Simmel?
It is, but I think the version we put up there might be slightly cut off. So I sent the updated version to our webmaster, so it might be slightly different, only because parts were cut off. So we're going to rectify that?
Okay, that's great. Well, I'm looking at this, and I think, Paul, you have 36 that are done, okay?
Well...
That's what I counted, because you haven't made color.
I did two, but one was two parts.
Oh, okay. Well, I just went by the green, and I saw that 36 are done. That's in the green. And then he has, the in-progress ones are in the yellow. If you want to scroll, Michelle, so they can see yellow, okay? And the one in the red was a town. So I think you did a great job of separating it and explaining it to all of us. So we, it's very comprehensive, and it's very clear to understand. Thank you.
This isn't my work solely. It's done by the entire business office.
Well, you run it, so, thank you. So anyone have a question for Paul? Anyone on the computer out there? Scott? Jackie, Mike?
No, not this.
Paul always does a professional job. That's what he's trained to do. He's excellent in his work. So people need it and understand it. Thank you, Paul.
Very clear. Yes, Scott?
Yeah, just a comment that I think, I'm impressed with the amount of progress that you've been able to make in a short period of time. So thank you very much.
I would add clearly, you know, working with the recommendations that would give us some new audit. And also in a prioritized fashion, which is exactly what we asked for. So thank you so much, and it's so clear. The color coding is just makes it simple for everyone, so.
Yeah, I agree with Tim. The color coding is wonderful, because it can make you see things right away. Thank you, Paul, for the coding. With my eyes, it really helps.
I know that my eyes, too.
I know that you have a continued plan to continue to report our movements toward these recommendations in subsequent board meetings. And I just feel great that we're encouraged that we're moving in the right direction on this.
Thank you very much. Okay, I only have one thing to add that I want to tell Dr. Simmel. Usually, April 1st, we provide the graduation date to the parents, okay? Because by then, we feel this, so that's been our usual. Good luck with that. All right, if there are no more questions, Mr. Ward?
I'll make a motion, ma'am chairman, to wish everybody Happy Valentine's Day and adjourn the meeting.
Thank you very much. Second, okay. Thank you. Good night. Have a good night. Thank you very much.